Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Okay, we have a quorum, so first item on the agenda is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items: A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 20th, 2015; B, approval of claims in the amount of $163,708.58; and payroll expenses of $88,984.41. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
That's a move.
I have a motion by Mr. Benson, seconded by Dr. Haniford. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Benson?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Number six on the agenda is reports from boards and officers.
Is there a planning commission report?
There was one item on the planning commission. It was to rezone property on the east side of town. It had been moved from the meeting the month before. That was approved. I don't have my minutes in front of me to give you the entire report, but we did have one item on that commission. I'm going to get the finance one.
Sure.
Finance committee met today, and we had our claims, purchase orders signed, and then we had a lot of discussion over our budget, and we are starting to get that kind of hammered out as far as where we're going to be going. We're starting to look at what we can do as far as capital improvements and departments, their requests versus what we're going to be allowed to do. We are anticipating a decrease in our sales tax revenues, so that's affecting our budget greatly, but I think that we're still going to be able to get a lot of what was requested done. We'll know more on that over the next couple of weeks once we move through that.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Miller? Joe Don, do you have anything to add?
No.
Is there a water, wastewater committee report?
We put the sewer line project on the skyline, and we're going to have to relook at it after the parking lot, redo their parking lot. So sewer line extension is going to go through where the parking lot was, and we're going to have to relook at other options there. We also looked at sewer expansion east of town and discussed the AMR projects, and I think we're going to have more on any of that on the meeting. And the street report. We looked at the full street project to see if there was still something we wanted to do, and we decided to do it, but there was possibly better ways to spend that money. And did other street budgets. Looked at maybe naming some intersections where that definitely could be spent, possibly redoing some intersections. And discussed maybe looking at a truck route through town.
Are there any questions for Mr. Fisher or Joe Don?
Do you have anything to add?
Well, the only thing I'd add to that is that during the water and sewer meeting, we did discuss a couple of the line replacements that were, water line replacements that we're looking at up on Young Street, Sealing Street, and Linden Street. Young Street would be more of a budgetary issue. Sealing and Linden, one, we've got a grant for sealing, so that's pretty much going to be what that is. And Linden Street is, we've pretty much got all the materials already purchased for that. It's just finding the opportune moment to get it done. Those are all that I would add.
Any questions for Joe Don on that? As far as the mayor's report is concerned, I've attended planning commission, finance committee, street and alley committee meetings. I didn't attend, but I've reviewed or been brought up to speed by Alex on the Northwest Oklahoma Water Action Plan Steering Committee's new plan that they've put forth. Attended a grand opening for Spade Echo and the ribbon cutting for that, also the unveiling of the Lemon Drops bronze sculpture at the Brunstetter Corner here downtown. Been kind of getting acclimated to the duties of the office as far as, I've been in, signed the signature cards for the bank, and signed my first round of checks, email set up, getting used to going in and getting mail and checking those kinds of things. I am looking at upcoming committee and board appointments, terms expiring in 2015. We have 15 positions altogether that are going to need to either be continued as they are or replaced by another member of our community. That includes the tree board, the hospital authority, library board, planning commission, the rec park board, airport commission, and the board of adjustments. So almost everything's looking for, or has expiring terms in 2015. Fielded several calls from citizens, and I won't say it's overwhelming, but it's been nice to visit with people still on this side of things. It's still a lot of opportunities for our community. I've talked with KALV about having some sort of a regular update from the mayor's office on the radio for just public awareness, different things that are going on with the city, and I'm looking probably at some other ways to do that. Joe Don and I have also been talking about some things. One of the things that he didn't mention in the city, or the street committee report was, we're planning on getting a map together that we can have posted online and other places so people can see what projects we're working on, where they're at in the community, and hopefully status on those projects. Thought of spending a lot of time with the city business manager, getting brought up to speed on a number of the other projects too for the community. That concludes my report. Does anybody have any questions? Joe Don, would you give the business manager's report, please?
I'd kind of segue off of what the mayor just said. The street map is one of the projects we're looking at for the street department, but we're also looking at a map of water and sewer line projects for the same reason, to kind of give a visualization of some of the projects that we've got under, that we're going to be looking at, and how we're going to try to get those done. As part of my regular report, I do want to say that, you know, the last couple of weeks has, the budget, the 15-16 budget has dominated a lot of my time. When I look back at the initial request of what staff wanted and revenues that I thought we were going to reasonably bring in, we were looking at an initial decline of about 8% in revenues and an increase of about 6% in expenditures over the current budget year. Now, staff and the finance committee are working to refine these numbers to what would be a more reasonable expectation. Right now, as things set, I believe we're about $350,000, what I'd consider us $350,000 out of balance, or away, being away from a balanced budget, so it's just making some of those numbers work, and we're working through that process. Recent rains have kind of slowed down a little bit of the construction up at the sanitation transfer station. There were some minor deficiencies found in the installation of rebar for the building foundation. This appears to be corrected. The engineers need to come and do their final inspection on that rebar before they pour the concrete. They were looking at trying to do that concrete pour last week, excuse me, last Friday, but that didn't happen, and it doesn't look like they're probably going to get a lot of concrete poured this week. Nothing that's going to set the project back for timelines at this time, I don't believe. We met, staff and Myers Engineering, met with the electricians to get started on the electrical portion of the building construction. We're still in preliminary stages of development for this part of the project. At the last council meeting, where you appointed me to the Woods County Ambulance Service Task Force, this task force met on April 21st and then again on April 30th. Pretty much the ta, you know, to boil it down, the task force does believe that a 522 district is the way to go for additional revenues to support the three services. Right now, it's down to ironing out some of the details as to how we go about wording that and making that work for all three services, and before we try to take it to a voter, or before we start doing a lot of promotion on it, but that does appear to be the direction we're going to go at this time, or request the commissioners to go at this time. Do need to inform you that we did, today we did receive a DEQ environmental complaint warning letter. This is, the reason for this was open burning at the transfer station. I will go on to say that the city did not, was not doing open burning. That was, somebody else had gone down there, a private citizen had gone down there and evidently lit the fire. And basically what we're talking about is burning, they'd burned, started burning the tree limbs and the grass clippings. Once we were informed about it, we did go down and put it out, put out the fire, but what in our doing, there was, but there was a complaint filed against us on that. Now, DEQ did acknowledge that the complaint had been filed, but they were not, you know, they weren't able to specifically say that we were the ones that did it, so thus it's just a warning letter, not a formal, not a, not one of our two that we get, because normally you get one warning letter, an opportunity to correct it, a second warning letter, the second letter that you would get, or the second time for that offense, if you're found in wrongdoing, there's fines that go along with that. They are pretty substantial fines. Now, they did note that there was smoke and blackened areas around the areas where we are storing this stuff, but that is because, yes, sometimes we do burn, but we do with the, the only time we burn there is with DEQ consent and permission and permit. So we've gone through all the channels that we need to go through to make sure that that is the prop, is DEQ permitting for those burns that we have done down there. Went down there, after, I got a phone call letter, a phone call from them on Friday saying that we were going to get the letter when I drove down there and observed what has happened. We've got a lot of grass clippings, piles of pallets, and piles of limbs that, where people have just dumped stuff off around, around the openings for the, for the concrete clear wells that were down there, that we're going to have to go down there and clean up, where people will be conscious of the situation that's down there and not just pile their limbs anywhere and everywhere, or dump the pallets, or dump things that aren't allowable to be dumped down there in that area, and just leave it for us to clear up. Some of the upcoming meetings that we have, that I have coming up, or that the city has coming up, tomorrow, I believe, we have the library board meeting. I've got an OML legislative meeting in Oklahoma City on the 6th. The airport meeting, board meeting will be held on the 11th, and I've got an Oklahoma Tax Commission Liaison Board meeting scheduled for the 15th. Mayor and council, that would be my report. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Joe Don, could you explain the 522 district?
What that, well, what that will actually do, if it's approved by the county, they will form a 522 board. What happens after that, you know, we're trying to get the details worked out. What we are requesting is that each entity, the three ambulance services, remain autonomous in the 522 board contract with the, with the services to provide the service for the service district. Somehow we're trying to figure out to make sure that that wording stays with the election so that there's no chance of that, those districts go, you know, each individual service goes away. I think that the, everybody feels that the individual services are able to provide the service and providing the service and providing an adequate service, but each service needs a little help with, with funding. I mean, right now, I think we, we budget to receive around, as far as the city of Alva's concerned, around $300,000, and we look at more like $600,000 or $700,000 for expenditures for that department. And there are still needs we don't get addressed each year. The extra funding would, would go toward, toward that department to help address those extra needs that we don't get, that we don't get to address every year. But that is one thing that each service and each representative on the task force is pretty adamant about, is that the services remain intact the way they are, and the district, the 522 district basically collects and divvies out the, the millage that's, that gets approved.
There any other questions for Joe Don? Thank you, Joe Don. Next item on the agenda is presentation of invoice by NWSU Foundation for 2015 Spring Semester Scholarship. Mr. Bird?
Good evening, Mayor. Council. Thank you for listening to this evening. There's some new faces here. I want to start off by congratulating you and thanking you for your service. Been here just about 10 years and sort of built a firm law school. If you have some questions, please ask me. I've also got several people in the back who are going to answer the hard questions. Dr. Grant Cunningham, our president. Dr. Steve Wilman is our executive vice president. Dr. David Payke is our vice president for administration. Mr. Caleb Mossberg is our dean of student affairs and enrollment management. And then we have a special guest, Blake Demong, who's a nursing student from Broken Arrow. And I've been doing my job for about 10 years now, starting next month, and it took me about five years to figure out the best way to really get investors and slash donors motivated and put one of our students in Florida. So we're going to do that tonight. Looking forward to that. Before you have the bill for $273,194.84, I'd be happy to address any questions you might have about that. If I have one, I'm going to pass the torch to Dr. Grant Cunningham.
Well, thank you, Skeeter, and I would echo Skeeter's comments that welcome to new faces, new members of the city council, and we hope that twice a year we don't bore you too much, but we do always want to come and say thank you to the city council, thank you to the citizens of Alva, and it's that time of year. I thought I would be really short and sweet and actually do something a little different with a student. As Skeeter said, this student is Blake Demong. He's from Broken Arrow. He is a freshman. He was part of my president's leadership class this fall. Did such a good job. He's one of two that I asked to return next year and be one of the sophomore mentors for the class. He is a nursing student, and I'm just going to, in his words, have him tell you a little bit about coming to Northwestern, and I'm sure he received the Alva incentive award, and just let him talk, and then Mr. Mossberg will wind it up, and as Skeeter said, will answer any questions that you might have. So Blake, I like his attire color. I didn't tell him to do that.
For everyone, like I said, my name is Blake Demong. I'm from Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, so the opposite side of the state. And like I said, I'm also a freshman nursing major. My goal here is to get my bachelor's degree in nursing and hopefully move on to graduate school to get my nurse practitioner degree after. Many high schools from my side of the state don't really think to come across the I-35 line, and the reason why I decided to attend here was the great scholarship opportunities that I was awarded here. And through help with the Alva incentive dollar, I was able to receive the presidential leadership class scholarship and the Ranger Preview scholarship, which are both funded, I know, by the city of Alva. My experience of the community and campus working together during Ranger Preview really made my decision easy to come to school here, because I saw that everybody was friendly, everybody really worked together well, and I saw how the city and the college really meshed together and helped each other out. I believe with the continuing help of this Alva incentive dollar that Northwestern will grow in student numbers for years to come, and I hope that we can get more students from my side of the state by keeping the Alva incentive dollar growing each year. So thank you, guests.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. And good evening, and thank you all for coming here and visiting your life. Of course, our scholarship program, and as Blake said, that scholarship really does a whole lot to help us in our recruitment efforts at Northwestern. And as he mentioned, we have a tough time recruiting students across that I-35 line, and that is something that definitely spoke to him. And as we continue to pursue our recruitment efforts and reach out to students that are outside of our main service area, that message does, does speak well. Our students in our service area here close to Alva definitely know of the scholarship, and many of those students take advantage of that scholarship and come to Northwestern. But this allows us to reach out to areas like Broken Arrow, and those areas further east or south, or even in Kansas and such, and reach out to those students who may not know about Northwestern. So from the city and the council's support here, you guys make it possible for us to recruit students like Blake and many others like him to Northwestern, who's going to have very successful careers and make a very successful future life for themselves. And so with that support, you all are making a big difference in the lives of many students. Definitely thank you.
I might say one more thing. You all be sure and pay attention, in June, our women's rodeo team is number one in the region. They have qualified as a team to go to the college national finals that it is in, in the third week in June. We're hoping that they come back with a national championship, which I think is certainly possible, so watch, stay tuned.
Thank you. And for as much as you've expressed your appreciation for the city, we certainly appreciate everything that the university does in the city and for our community, so thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion and action on ordinance 2015-051, repealing section 18-41 of the Alva City Code of Ordinances and creating Article 5 of Chapter 22 of the Alva City Code of Ordinances entitled Burning Ordinance, providing for definitions, providing permit requirements, establishing guidelines for permit denial and revocation, providing exceptions to open burning, providing punishment for violation of said section, repealer and declaring an emergency.
Well, before this, you know, on this item, we've got, the Public Safety Committee heard it back on March 2nd and decided that, yes, they would like to proceed with it and send something on to the city council, and our assistant chief slash fire marshal was the gentleman on point on this, and I'll let him explain the ordinance and its intent, and we can go from there.
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about this, to give you a little background of how this kind of came to terms with us. We wanted to be a little bit proactive instead of reactive. We saw some issues that could possibly cause some problems with all of our new annexations for the city, some agriculture ranch, and, you know, most farmers, they like to burn their wheat pasture. So that's where we kind of started to relooking at this. Once we really looked at the ordinance itself, it was a little strict with the, basically, if you liked to cook with charcoal, you couldn't. So that's pretty strict. We also were getting some complaints on some recreational fires, you know, fire pits, some chimaas, you know, that people like to have in their backyard. And as our ordinance said, you couldn't do it. So we started looking and researching different ordinances, and we kind of, between myself and the fire chief, we kind of tailored the ordinance to the city of Alva, what we thought that would be acceptable and that we felt comfortable in. I believe you guys have had the opportunity to look at the burn ordinance itself. You know, I don't want to sit here and read it all. Do you guys have any questions within the ordinance itself, what you've read, that maybe I can entertain and issue your questions?
I was looking at that and wondering that I might add that we, we kind of turned a blind eye, if you will, to some of the chimaas and that type of thing, and we realized that we need to either address the ordinance as it was written or amend it to something that we can live with to allow people to enjoy those recreational types since. The, some of the areas that we annexed had been conducting controlled burns without incident or without complaint. This ordinance, the way it's written, would allow people in those areas to continue to conduct some of the, some of the activities that they were conducting. I guess that's pretty much what I want to mention. It's, I think one thing that, that makes me feel good about this ordinance, it seems like a day and age when government, big or small, is actually becoming more restrictive, and this is an opportunity where we can actually become a little bit less restrictive and still do it with the safety of the other citizens, you know, neighbors, and that's, that's one thing that...
Clerk, I have a question, or Mr. Miller. On page 2, number 7, it talks about, it has to be 10 miles an hour or less of sustained wind to have a controlled, what you call it, Kirk?
Recreational fire.
Do you, I kind of feel that might be pretty light winds for most places in the town of Alva. For instance, if it's blowing 10 mile an hour at the airport, at my house, it's probably not even blowing. And that was one, only, really the only question I came up with, with reading through this.
And I would probably go ahead and probably say that within myself, you know, if that weren't the case, and I realize that this is what the ordinance says 10 miles an hour, I want you to be aware of that, and to be safe when you're using these things, because we well know embers and ashes, you know, have a tendency to burn. I think that if you do your due diligence in using this, you know, I'm not going to drive around and go down the alleys with my wind meter and go, it's 11 miles an hour, you need to put your fire down. I think this is a guideline that we want you to use it. I think this is a guideline that we want you to use it by. I think it would be enforced to the simple fact that if it was a, uh, somebody was being negligent within their burning, it'd give, it'd give me an opportunity to revoke that, uh, situation on it. But, uh, and maybe there are any suggestions, but we, we just want to be conscientious of it.
Well, I think...
But I understand what you're saying.
I think that we need to all be conscientious of it, you know, the, you know, ten mile an hour and, uh, you know, up on the hill in the housing addition is a whole lot more than...
Down.
Down here, you know, so, it's one of those deals where one rule doesn't apply to all kind of type deal, but I don't know how, how you compromise and make it where it's still weather.
And that is a tough decision to make to determine, you know, uh, you know, we, I definitely accept a recommendation of whether you think that that wording, you know, or that miles per hour needs to change on a minute.
Isn't it also the Mezzanet site down by College Farms, just like seven miles away?
Yeah.
Does there, is there not, is there not a, uh, something we can read at the airport?
Yeah, but it's not...
It's not set out as a web or anywhere like that.
It is. It's on, it's on the airports. I, but I, I kind of have to agree with Brian, that if you, how, how are you going to define areas of town?
Well, you're not going to define areas, you're not going to be able to define areas of town, but like Randy says, the Mezzanet site that it's referring to is seven miles south of town.
Right. I just say, I live, I live on the edge of town, and if it's blowing fifteen miles an hour at my house, it's blowing pretty good, and it's not going to be at your house, like you're standing up. And how are, how are we going to have him try to enforce?
Oh, well, you can't enforce the same, I mean, whatever we say is just going to have to be.
A lot of this is going to, a lot of this is going to be driven by complaints anyway.
Right.
You know, um, you, so, you know, we're not requiring people to come in and say, hey, I'm going to grill out tonight, is it okay? Uh, it's going to be complaint-driven. So if there is a situation where there is a complaint, I think that's ju, this is just one of the areas that, of course, would be looked at. Uh, you know, more, more sizable would be, you know, in my mind, would be how, where are they in location to the any structure? You know, because there's a, they would probably deviate from a lot of the areas if there's a complaint.
Would you be opposed to changing that to fifteen miles an hour? That's kind of the difference, because what I see here is more important than number eight, which basically allows you at any time to build a hazard, to work and shut it out. So it may be a little more flexibility on item seven, but if the fire department's judging it fifteen mile an hour, so with hazard, you got to be really careful and that's what they fire out.
Could that not be addressed on a case-by-case basis as people file for permit?
Well, this, this is very...
We don't, we don't accept all the permits for recreational fires. And, and like, uh, Mr. Dunn said, it's going to be complaint-driven. Uh, I'm not going to drive alleys or look behind fences and see if you have a, a recreational fire going on in your backyard. It's going to be when somebody calls into, uh, which kind of dispatch and files a complaint, or calls the local fire department here and says, you know, somebody's being negligent within their burning, and then will call the out on it, you know, and determine, you know...
If it is or not.
What, what we're trying to do is create a set of guidelines that, that we would publish a, a, a sheet of safety guidelines for people to look at and meet those conditions if they wanted to have a recreational fire, like a chimenea, or even, even under this, a, uh, fire ring would be acceptable. And it's, it's just more of a guideline to, uh, for them to establish whether or not the conditions are safe for them to do so.
Could, could we not just strike line seven completely out? Since you do have line eight, it gives you the authority that if it's creating a fire safety hazard. I know we're looking for a guideline, but at the same time, it's got to be attended. And if you come by and say, hey, look, blowing thirty miles an hour, I know you're sitting there, but this is ridiculous, put it out. And it is complaint-driven, could we not just strike line seven from it? Don't worry about how strong the wind is blowing and try to judge whether or not it's okay or fifteen...
Down further within, it says that you're ultimately responsible for...
Or maybe the, uh, possibility of a compromise between striking it and changing it to omit the specific mile per hour and say, sustained, sustained winds must be appropriate. There, you know, some wording there that I'm looking for, I'm not sure what it said. Must be considered, taken into consideration and, and, uh, just a, I don't know, maybe it's, maybe there is a right, but...
I think you're right when you said that too much regulation sometimes is, is, is overstepping. I think if we strike that, ultimately, the person lighting the fire is responsible themselves for it, whether they light it and the wind is too strong, they're responsible on what happens because of it.
And that's, that's permitted or non-permit. They were talking about recreational fires that doesn't require permit, but, uh, both sides of it, I mean...
Counselor, can you think of something that we could word that as, so that if somebody's reading this, it'll remind them to think about the wind speeds and conditions?
You could probably have some provision that says that, uh, rather than just sustained winds, that recreational fires shall not, uh, be unreasonably, I mean, I can come up with something. I can't probably do it right here, that, that's attached to the wind or, or the environment, you know, something of that nature.
And I wonder about number three, too. I mean, how many of these chimeneas are sitting on somebody's wooden deck and...
Right.
Is that...
And that probably aren't twenty feet, I mean, I think of mine right now, and I'm pretty sure it's probably not twenty feet from my house.
Well, look at number, number two, though. Uh, stacked size of firewood shall not exceed three feet in diameter by two feet high. We're thinking about that, whatever, we're saying twenty feet from a combustible surface, so, um...
So you're thinking about that size of fire when you're talking twenty feet, not just my little chimenea?
You, you also need to, you know, be, uh, aware that any flame near combustible surfaces is a danger, so...
I know it's one thing, it doesn't say that your fire should be contained within a fire ring, chimenea, or, or light.
I think that's just handled by saying, uh, combustible surfaces are not contained.
So it says also, firewood shall be only used, you know, what's, there's...
Within the definitions, it would explain.
Any, basically, any type of wood, probably.
It says firewood, uh, dry clean woods, such as crestle lawns, charcoal cordwood, used in, in, in fields, inside of residence or from out of the door, recreational fire, on the definitions. So it doesn't give you the opportunity to take charcoal boxes and bury them in your backyard and chimenea and fire ring.
Or leaves or brass fittings or something that would smolder for a long period of time.
And create a lot of smoke, because if it, you produce a lot of smoke in the process of issues and behavior, that can cause some problems, you know, happen to fire, but, but it costs some...
How would that affect some of these entities that are dumping pallets out at the, the dump site north that Joe Don addressed earlier tonight? Would they be able to pull a permit and burn pallets and such at their area on the outskirts of town?
If we're talking about the industrial sites east of town, um, they, on their locations, since it is in close proximity to residential locations, um, and it doesn't cause a hazard, they can come and apply for a permit, I can go view that side area, and if, if I deem it safe, um, to where that they can, you know, if it's rid of them pallets in a safe manner, uh, since pallets are just pine wood, you know, clean burning wood, you know, different than burning them in your chimney.
Because that might kill two birds with one stone.
And that's something that they were doing prior to being annexed.
Right. It's been stopped or ceased since they've been annexed.
Right.
But that would give them an opportunity to come for, come with this.
Would it be too simple for number three to say, fire shall be located a safe distance from any structure or combustible material?
I think we need, I like your ordinance, and I'm in favor of it, but I'd like for us to see us do something to number three and number seven.
Well, a lot of times people don't use common sense, and I think they need a specific distance, because a lot of people don't understand...
That's twenty feet, though, that's, you know, I mean, I'm just thinking in my backyard, if I lost fifty feet long, it's going to, I got to be twenty feet from my house and twenty feet from my wood fence and twenty feet from this wood fence. So in the middle of my yard is going to be where I can put my fire, which seems a little...
Right. The other part that kind of bothers me is the responsibility issue. I mean, most of us here own our own homes, and along with that, you carry your own liability insurance, but there's a lot of houses in town that are, um, they, they have renters in them, they have zero insurance. I mean, so does that responsibility fall under the landlord?
The responsibility would fall with the person that's...
To set the fire, but if it's some college kid here from out of town that rents, I mean, how do you go back, they have nothing?
It, it comes down to, you know, determining if it is, you know, if it's just negligence and no more, and, you know, if it's something reckless of use.
Right.
You know, or if it was intentional, it's, uh...
Right.
So, I mean, there's a lot of things that can come to play on a situational basis on that scenario.
Right, because I'm, I'm a landlord, I have rent houses, so if I have some individual rents from me goes out and sets a fire and burns half the town down, does that fall on me, or does it fall on the renter?
If they fell asleep with a cigarette and, and burnt your house down from the inside.
Right, and I carry liability insurance for that, but...
And it burns the neighbor's house, I mean, it...
You know, ultimately, it falls on me.
Well, well, I think that we do maybe want to relook at some of these. I do think that we need to put some specifics in there and not make it ambiguous. Uh, they have to have something to be able to enforce upon. And, uh, in, in the event that there were a fire that gets out of control, burns something down, I mean, so we can stand firm, I think that we both can follow policies that were applied. So I think we need to have some specifics in there, and it can be adjusted, but I believe we'll get to that. I think it gives, I'll go back to Brian, you'll have to comment, you know, if you turn a blind eye to this, if you want to be proactive, you know, you want to, uh, you want to have some specifics involved, so I think we keep that in mind as we go forward.
But one thing I'd like to just kind of talk about for a minute is that we've spent a lot of time here talking about whether or not a chimenea is, uh, is part of this, is for, is a recreational fire. But if it was in a chimenea, based on the definition we've got here for open fire, open burning, it wouldn't be considered that anyway. I mean, our definition for open fire or open burning is a fire burning in matter, uh, whether concentrated or dispersed, which is not contained within a fully enclosed firebox, structure, or vehicle, and from which the products of combustion are emitted directly into the open atmosphere without passing through a stack, duct, or chimney. So if a fire is burning in a chimenea or a grill, it's really not considered an open burn to begin with, much less a recreational fire.
It says fully enclosed chimeneas are have to cut out, they don't have a door.
And we're talking about the section anywhere that refers to recreational fires.
Right, but I mean, it's still...
Is there a, uh, a metric that you can, you, you mentioned, Kurt, this is, um, um, set on a standard of three feet by two feet? Um, is there a sliding scale, the smaller the fire is, the distance changes and the wind speeds are different?
Yeah, uh, there, there is, and, and a lot of this language came from similar ordinances. I think, uh, I don't know if it would be something to be considered or not, but I think, uh, we could change item three to fifteen feet and item seven to fifteen miles an hour and still be a safe guideline to go by. But I do think we need something for them to reference.
Mr. Telling him, do you think it'd be out of line if he put a recommendation or something? I could use the language as a recommendation instead of, uh, set...
I mean... Well, you have a problem when you get, you get into the ambiguity with the public. If you say just a recommendation that you not do this, well, then it, you can't penalize it. I think if they, if they don't follow your recommendation, it's either in violation or not, but a recommendation would not allow you to do it. I think you use that language in an ordinance and be forceful.
We've answered, uh, a lot of calls where people are adopting recreational type fires and have had little or no incident with, with them. It's just been something that we've had to instruct them to, it's against the current ordinance, and they need to cease doing that now. That being said, uh, you, you take five or six different people, and they're all going to have a different perception of what a safe recreational fire is. And that's why I think it's important to have something that, that sets a guideline. And I think where, where there might be some room for flexibility is if the neighbor calls and says, I'm concerned about this, and the fire department goes and checks it out and feels that there is not a concern, or that, that they have some leeway, that, that we would have some leeway as to say, we feel like this is not a safe condition, and we need to do something different, or give them some advice as to what to do differently.
I know with our fireworks requirements for safety, that it's, uh, per inch of, of, of shell is the safe distance to be away. And I don't know if there's a similar way to say, per inch of flame or per inch of combustible materials in the, in the... If you've got two foot, when you got a two foot diameter there, two foot in height, twenty feet away? I mean, that's a foot every ten feet, or for a foot of...
And, and, uh, it's getting from vinyl siding from, from the, this would probably start having a working side. So, you know, a lot of houses have vinyl siding, and we're just trying to...
And mine's brick, I mean, you know, but is it, how are you going to get it applicable to all? That's what I'm worried about when you start putting metrics in there.
Can I, number seven, even stay ahead of a certain mile per hour plus the Mezzanet sites far away? There's some more wording there, so the hazardous or something by the fire department that's not that... I mean, if you guys determine that it's too great wind speed, a lot of people aren't going to necessarily note this through the ordinance as far as the wording there to just have the deal. Like I said, I mean, down at Mezzanet site, the speed's far away, that is, it can be thirty mile an hour down there and be nothing here.
And, and most people that you deal with right now, you know, blowing the tree stump off the corner of the alley and it gets forty-five mile an hour winds, and I didn't, I mean, that's the general consensus with the people that you deal with, well, I didn't, and, well, where do I run? Well, I don't have any, that...
So, we, it's kind of like any law or ordinance, a lot of people, they try to plead ignorance, but it doesn't really go very far.
And, um, Mr. Miller had recommended, um, for forty, fifteen feet, and on number seven, that we go up to fifteen miles an hour, and if that's acceptable, compromise to...
I think we need to pass it.
That's part of the chief's regulationation, part of the regulationation, and I would accept that.
The, what we're hearing is the intent of the, of the Fire Marshal and the Fire Chief on, on this. And should the personnel change, are we going to be dealing with the, you know...
More restrictive.
You know, where they, it is a letter of the code, and, and...
How about if we just say the fifteen miles per hour and stop right... How about if we just say the fifteen miles per hour and stop right there and don't refer to the mezzanine site?
I think you need to, they need to have some way to go with saying...
I know Kirk, Kirk's got a wind detector on his pickup to tell you how fast the wind's going, when he pulls up to their spot to investigate, he's gonna know how fast the wind's going.
But I think you, I, I think you're right, you need to have a measurement to say, this is what it is.
Well, I don't have a problem with the fifteen miles an hour, but let it be fifteen miles an hour at my house, or...
Well, you can say the Alva Airport, they've got an AWAS station that records it.
Okay, but fifteen mile an hour out there might be, fifteen mile an hour at my house is gonna be thirty out there.
Yes.
Seven and a half to my canyon. I like the more off-site idea then. I think we ought to just...
We're gonna be the one investigating. They're gonna, nobody's gonna go out, I mean, how many people have wind detectors at their house, no, I mean, there's some, but...
Most people's gonna flip up their iPhone when they get to that weather site, and...
Right, they're not even gonna look at the weather site, they're just gonna go outside and, if they're, and feel it, that's good enough, that's lighter.
But it gives them a, a, something quantifiable for which they can exercise judgment.
What about if you did this, if you said whatever you choose to mile an hour at the location of the fire?
I agree.
I don't have a problem with that.
They need to have an ability to...
And that's kind of what I meant by dropping off the Oklahoma mezzanine site, just...
As long as they have the equipment to measure wind speed, anyone can do that.
And you've got that, don't you, Kirk?
It's quantifiable at the moment, but it's developing, meaning since they make handheld anemometers that are fifteen, twenty minutes.
So that'll be in the budget request for... We'll get that on a personal landmark.
And, and sort of, are you still looking at, are you setting the... I'm, I'm perfectly fine with it.
Are you fine with three and seven being fifteen and dropping and making it at locate fire location?
Yeah, that's adding the language at the bars.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number 2015 dash zero five one with the correction on, uh, section twenty-two dash one seventy-four A three as being fifteen feet and number seven being fifteen miles an hour at the location of the fire.
That's always the nervous in separate.
Yes.
I have a motion from Mr. Benson, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance two thousand fifteen dash zero five one amending, uh, section twenty-two, one seventy-four A three to read fifteen feet instead of twenty, and number seven to read sustained winds must be less than fifteen miles an hour at the site of the fire. Is there any further discussion?
Do we not need to repeal the previous first?
It, it has part of the ordinance.
Any further discussion? Okay, please call vote.
Yes.
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 I'll make, I'll make a motion to declare an emergency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Benson, second by Mr. Fisher, declare an emergency, is there any discussion on that? Please call.
When did that ordinance take effect?
After the publication, since it was published. Any further discussion? Please call vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you, gentlemen, for the work you put into that, I, I think it is a vast improvement, I think we all agree it's a vast improvement, and, and whatever, I know we'll work through as it, we get used to adhering to it, so, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Number nine on the agenda is discussion and approval of the appointment of Dr. Charles Tucker to replace Kelly Parker on the Alva Tourism and Development Committee as recommended by the Alva Chamber of Commerce, um, that is a committee that's set up to have two members recommended by the Chamber of Commerce, I was one of those members, I'm not serving in that capacity anymore, so I would entertain a motion to approve Dr. Tucker.
So moved.
Got a motion by Bryce Benson, second by Bo Hannaford, uh, is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Number ten is discussion in action on electing two members to the Board of Trustees of the Okla- Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group for three-year terms commencing July first, two thousand fifteen, and authorize mayor to sign ballot.
Um, this comes up every year, we've got some, uh, mem- we'll have the trustees go off the, uh, OMAG board, uh, as members or as participants in that group, we are allowed to make nominations and to vote on the trustees, um, you know, we didn't turn in anybody from here to be nominated, the people that are listed here obviously have been turned in, um, the two, I know quite a few of these people, I'm not gonna say I know all of them, uh, but I know, uh, Ms. Shealight and Mr. Stevenson have both been long-term members of this board and have served, uh, adequately in their tenure, in their tenure there, um, Ms. Shealight is from Fort Cobb, Mr. Stevens- uh, Stevenson is from Ponca City, uh, we have several other members here and each, you know, I don't have anything to say bad about any of them. We did get a letter from Mr. Stevenson, and I think it is provided in your packet, uh, requesting our support, um, it's, uh, you know, I would, as a recommendation, I would have no problem with, uh, recommending either one of the incumbents to continue to serve.
Is there a motion from council for the...
Yes.
Uh, do you know the city manager from down there?
I do know her, yes. Uh, she's, um, been city manager there for, um, about three or four years, uh, before that she served as their clerk treasurer, uh, finance director, um, and she served in that capacity for maybe, um, seven or eight years, it seems like, um, she's a very capable lady, I have nothing that I'd say against her.
Anytime we get someone from Oklahoma State or Columbia, that's always a, that's positive.
That's stretching it, calling that northwest Oklahoma.
I understand.
Would you like to make that motion?
I would move that, uh, we, uh, offer our support to Kimberly Meek, city manager of the high level, Fred Stevenson, city manager of Ponca City, uh, to our support with Board of Trustees and then probably Municipal Assurance Group, and author our mayor's file.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Valencia, second from Mr. Miller, to elect Kimberly Meek, city manager, guyman, and he said Stevenson, still, right?
Craig Stevenson.
Yes, Craig Stevenson, city manager of Ponca City, to be our representative, or to the Board of Trustees, the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Valencia?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Ecker?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
All right, next item on the agenda is discussion in action to reject all bids for the paving improvement project on Flynn Street from Fourth to Seventh Street.
This project came in, um, when we opened the bids, it did come in over what we were expecting, uh, the street and alley committee did meet to discuss the, uh, to discuss the bid, um, at this time, it's recommended that we reject this bid and, um, apply those funds to other projects as needed.
Is there a motion from the council to do so?
Would those projects be street oriented?
Yes, they will be street oriented, these were street funds, that is designated towards streets, so yes, they will be street projects.
So moved. I have a motion from Mr. Fisher, is there a second?
Can we make sure that motion, what is motion there for the clerk?
Is that a motion to reject all bids?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion from Mr. Fisher, a second by Mr. Milton?
Yes, sir.
Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Fisher?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Milton Chan?
Yes.
Ecker?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Rick, help me, if I should mess this up, help me out. Discussion in action entered into executive session percent to twenty-five, Oklahoma statute three oh seven B two to discuss negotiation with IAFF local three seven eight two Alva, Oklahoma.
Make a motion, enter it to executive session.
Second.
Um...
Motion.
We have a motion and a second, motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Benson, any further discussion? All right, call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Ecker?
Yes.
Ellen?
Okay, I'd like to ask everyone to leave, exceller session, um, there will be no action take on number fourteen. Number fifteen is remarks and inquiries by citizens.
Yes, I have one, do I need to stand up and do it as a citizen, or can I do it from here?
No, you're the council person, next time.
Next item, right. All right, remarks and inquiries by council members.
That's me.
Mr. Milton.
Everybody's aware that I have the canyon on Fourteenth Street, trust from Fred Newman behind Bo, um, I procured the old decorative concrete planters from Central National Bank as they did the remodel, and I would like to put three or four of them along the edge of my canyon, not by the street, but by the edge of my canyon, and put some flowers in them and decorate, but I know that is on city easement property, and I'm wondering if that would be an issue with the council or the city if I did so. Save me getting another letter.
But I've got it saved. I don't, it's not...
They're portable, they're not permanent, so, I mean, if something needed to be moved, I can move them, but I would like to beautify the edge of that just a little bit, and that would be a way to do that.
You talking about the north side or this?
Um, I'm talking on the edge of Fourteenth Street, or my side of Fourteenth, but closer to my edge of the canyon and not...
My suggestion would be is you get with the city inspector and see if it meets, uh, far enough away from the curb coating and all that kind of stuff.
Man, I, uh, I think that'd be the only thing that would prevent you from doing that, if there was a code issue against that, and I'm not aware of one at this time, but...
There, there could be a safety concern...
Yeah.
About where they were placed and the ability for vehicles to pull off safely or, you know, if there'd be an issue there, it possibly might go, maybe the safety committee would be reviewed, but...
Right, but that's not really parking lot, it's private property, right? No different...
Well, if you're in the city easement, you can do anything you want to in private property, as long as it's there, but it's in the city easement, coming up, uh, next to the street, because there's so many feet of easement across, I don't know where that ends, and it could be a, a safety issue as to people that are driving up and down Fourteenth, they'd blow out their tire and they'd run into that, which opposed to going over the canyon.
Edge of the canyon, right.
At least that's all that's going over.
Which we've had happen.
But it could be, I mean, it might need to be reviewed for that issue, to make sure that no particular violation there, so...
So who do I need to talk to?
Well, I'll just come in, we'll visit with Randy about it and see what, see if there's something we can work out and how we can get it, if it needs to go somewhere else, if it, we can just, if we can make that decision, or whether we need to take it to the safety, just kind of see what we, kind of what you're looking at and...
Okay, very good.
What we may have.
Uh, today we, uh, opened up the bids for the gun range, for the canopy over the gun range, uh, they did come in higher than what the amount of our, our quest from tourism tax was, we're gonna meet Thursday evening, uh, the committee's gonna meet and decide if we want to scale down the project, or if we're gonna be able to raise the, uh, the difference, um, in the time allotted, uh, to get that project started, but, uh, one way or the other, we'll start some sort of canopy over that, if, if we have to downsize it, it would probably be, we would do the right outside, um, and then, uh, not do the pistol range, uh, at this time, if we do it that way.
Why don't you put a big lockbox out there on a big pole and ask for donations, you might get more than you think.
We are, we are going, we are gonna hit up some, uh, some entities for that, and we, we do have some grants, um, we were going to get a large grant from, from, uh, NRA, but we couldn't apply for it until we knew the project was going to start, and those had to be in by December thirty-first, so, any grant from, from that organization would come next year, and so, we, we may, we'll know more after Thursday, what we, what we might want to do, and so at the next council meeting, we'll probably report what we're gonna do there. Uh, the next item I have is, is I've received one, uh, evaluation for Joe Don, uh, another one's in the mail somewhere, uh...
Lost in the la la land.
But I, I, I'm still waiting on, on two more, from Chad and Mr. Valencia, call you out, um, if you could, uh, get those to me, that would be appreciated, so the personnel committee could meet and, uh, take care of, uh, our business manager's evaluation.
Thanks, dude.
And if y'all'd like to come by, I'll help you do, I'll help you write those in any way I possibly can.
Why don't you just write it and send it to me and I'll just forward it to our man.
Just sign it and forward it. Uh, that's, that's all.
Are there any other comments from council members? All right, we will adjourn, meeting of the city council, and call to order the Alva Utility Authority meeting, um, roll call, please.
Ellen?
Here.
Milton?
Here.
Benson?
Here.
Ecker?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Ellen?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Ellen?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Ellen?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Ellen?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Ellen?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Ellen?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Ellen?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved, discussion in action, um, the acceptance of the RG3 bid for automatic meter reading technology and water meter replacement in the amount of six hundred forty thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars.
Well, this, this was discussed at the Water, Waste Water Committee on the twenty-third, um, and at that meeting, the committee had asked for us to make, to make some verifications on some of the equipment, uh, this agenda item was written to, with the anticipation of having that verification in, we do not have that verification in, um, there has been some question, and the documentation is not clear as to whether or not RG3 has bid the appropriate meter tech, meter, uh, equipment, uh, as per the, as per the bid, and we have not been able to verify that, we are in the process of making sure that this is a valid bid and whether it meets the specifications of our RFP, um, I've visited with the, uh... There has been some question in the documentation is not clear as to whether or not RG three has bid the appropriate meter tech- meter, uh, equipment uh, as per the, as per the bid, and we have not been able to verify that. We are in the process of making sure that this is a valid bid and whether it meets the specifications of our RFP. I've visited with the, uh, water wastewater committee about this today because we did put this on there with the anticipation of getting that verification, but we have not received that yet. At this time, we're not ready to, or I'm not comfortable with, uh, making the recommendation for us to move forward um, until we, uh, are certain that we are receiving the equipment that we had requested to be, uh, bid for.
Council was not going to be tabled in this action.
What the council wants to do.
Would there be a motion? Motion tabled by Mr. Valencia. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Fisher. Any further discussion? Call the vote.
Fisher.
Yes.
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 Okay. Uh, we will adjourn the meeting of the Alva Utility Authority and call to order the Alva Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Here.
Yeah, here. Here, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee declaring to discuss and desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April twenty, two thousand fifteen, and approval of claims in the amount of fourteen thousand, eight hundred five dollars and forty-nine cents and payroll expenses of four thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars and twenty-three cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Benson. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Yes.
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 So.
Number five is discussion in action on the payment to NW OSU Foundation for the two thousand fifteen spring semester scholarship billing in the amount of two hundred seventy-three thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars, eighty-four cents.
Uh, this is a follow-up to the presentation. Um, since we passed our purchasing policy ordinance, any any amount over in the excess of twenty-five thousand dollars must be approved by, uh, council and the, uh, or authority and then that approval recorded in the minutes. This, uh, this is obviously over twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, right now, the AEDA Scholarship Fund has in their checking account a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. We have, uh, two certificates of deposits totaling, or three certificates of deposits totaling, uh, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. And of that, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents will mature on June first. I have visited with college and informed them of this, and at after the June first, uh, CD matures, we will cash that in, make up the balance of what we need to to pay the bill, uh, get them pa- get them paid after June, uh, immediately after June first, uh, reinvest the remainder and, um, move on. Uh, and, uh, college was agreeable to that, so we wouldn't have to cash in a CD a month earlier, Heath, huh?
Make a motion to approve payment to the NW OSU Foundation in the amount of two hundred seventy-three thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars.
A motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Benson. Is there any further discussion?
Well, I noticed when I read through that that many individuals were multiple recipients of that. Have has anybody done any math on that to see if the true intent of that was being met as far as bringing back in an amount of tax dollars? You know, where one person gets four different bowls on it, will they actually have the ability to spend enough money to regenerate that many tax dollars, which I believe was the intent of the tax? Not that I'm against it, I'm very for it. I just wonder, has anybody done any math on it?
I don't know that we can do math to figure out if how much those kids are spending each back here in the city of Alva.
Well, if they got fifteen hundred, then they'd literally have to spend fifteen thousand before tax and be taxed on that and put fifteen hundred back in the tax system, which that's a little over a thousand a month on taxable items, so.
I don't think any of them are spending enough money to put any, what they get in the, what they get back, right?
The intent was, the intent of the scholarship was to be paid to new students to the, to the school, whether through freshmen or through transfers. It was, it was not to be given to them on the hopes that they would spend ninety times that and bring back tax dollars. It's to bring those students to Alva as first timers, and it's worked as far as what we've seen in numbers of the college. And and as we got the presentation that that, that scholarship is bringing those kids that wouldn't otherwise be coming here to Alva. And in doing so, they are spending their dollars here as opposed to elsewhere.
And the one thing else about this scholarship is that it is for first-time attendees.
It's not a continuing.
Yeah, so they would get it.
Second or third year.
Yeah, they would get it, and whether or not they would spend that over the first year semester, maybe not, but 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 through the four years they're here.
Mr. Baker could probably answer those questions.
They they could possibly be.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's been several years. The last, even on the contact study, that we did with students, that was rodeo, delivered, but I haven't certainly just that. No, without question, those students, if they are here, we can move out, spend money, and if they're eating at Alva, one of their businesses, those types of things, so it's a, which there is any kind of impact. I might also just mention on the description page in the background, you know, exhibit references fall two thousand fourteen, relevant spring.
Our agenda says two thousand fifteen.
Correct.
The agenda says.
Yes, the agenda is correct.
Yeah.
So I just didn't look at.
No, no, that.
That answered?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Hannaford.
Yes.
Selling. Valencia.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, guests. This meeting is adjourned.